We will now call to order the Muskogee City Council meeting for July 25, 2022. We will be led in the invocation by Councilor Tracy McGee. Followed by the flag salute, let us stand.
Let us bow hearts and minds for a moment of prayer. Oh heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for your guidance and your understanding. We ask that you give us an open heart and open mind to be able to do the business of the city of Muskogee today. We ask all these blessings in your son. Let us say hallelujah.
Let us look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
We will now consider approval of the minutes for the city council regular session July 11, 2022 or take unnecessary action. Have we had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there a motion to approve or any necessary corrections?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes for July 11. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items number one through eight. Are there any items that need to be moved to the regular agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval? Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the consent agenda passes. Item number nine.
Hold a public hearing and take action on a request by Hammond's, Hamby, and Price Attorneys, applicant Garrett Funeral Home LLC owner, for specific use to allow a building, housing, or retort to cremate human remains within the C2 General Commercial District, more specifically for a property located at 1020 West Oak Mulgy, or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is a request from Garrett Funeral Home for a specific use permit to allow for a retort or a crematory to be built on the former Bradley Family Funeral Home located at 11th and Oak Mulgy Avenue. This used to be a funeral home and a crematory. The applicants will be building a new building pursuant to state and city regulations that will be separate. These people are coming in from Fort Gibson and expanding their businesses into Muskogee. The Planning Commission and Public Works have approved the request and staff recommends approval. The zoning is proper. Happy to answer any questions.
We have no residents signed to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number nine. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Stay.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number nine passes. Item number 10.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance number 4168A to close a 20-foot alley located in Block 10 of Harrison Place Edition for the purpose of property consolidation or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, sir. This is an application filed by Jeff Carr for an alley closure in Block 10 of the Harrison Place subdivision. Mr. Carr owns the property outlined in green. The blue stretch is the alley area he wants to close. The reason for that is so it will have a single legal description and be his property. However, this has been contested by O G and E, O N G, oh, I can't even say it, O N G. They have main lines running underground and overhead. Subdivision Review Committee, Planning Commission, and Public Works have all denied the request. Staff recommends denial.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhammer. We don't have any residents signed to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. What is the discussion of the council?
Move for denial.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Mr. Tucker, clarify the yeses and the nos, please.
A yes is to deny.
A yes is to deny. Are we all clear?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item is denied. Item number 11.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request from Breann Mason, applicant, to issue a specific use permit to allow for a medical marijuana dispensary within the C2 General Commercial District, more specifically for a property located at 2604 Chandler Road, or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, sir. This is an application for a specific use permit filed by Breanna Mason. The property is owned by John Reynolds Jr. It's located at 2604 Chandler Road. The property around it is all Zone C2. There is residential, which is the neighborhood to the right on the screen. It's toward the back of the residential property. The residential property is entered on a different street in a different area. This is properly zoned. The Planning Commission this morning had a split decision, two for and two against. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhammer. We don't have any residents signed to speak to this item on tonight, so we will close the public hearing. What is the will of the council?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Van.
Ms. Boden, you know, I asked you, what did I ask you just earlier before council meeting started?
Yes.
In case, I had a call today from a gentleman, and I'm not going to reveal his name anything, but on this dispensary, I just want to make sure that we, you know, I know we've approved other ones, but I just want our citizens to know why that we do approve them. And can you tell them what you told me?
Yes, sir. So if an application is properly filed and the dispensary, proposed dispensary location is properly zoned, as long as they meet the requirements, which are minimum in our ordinance right now, and they're not within 1,000 feet of any public or private school, then unless there are objections or unless we think it's going to impact negatively the surrounding area, then we do recommend approval.
Thank you. I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Further discussion from the council? What is your pleasure?
Move for approval?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number 11. Further discussion? Let's be clear, motion to approve.
Yes.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 12.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance number 4163A to close and vacate the 50-foot right-of-way located within the Judson C Fast Edition known as Edens Avenue, or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, sir. This is an application for street closure filed by Jason Chup. The proposed closure is highlighted in yellow. The Oakymark is located to the, at the top of the mat, of the map. Lowe's is to the right and Brockway Glass is to the left up on the screen. The area highlighted in yellow is the area proposed to be closed by the applicant. The rest of that stretch into Brockway Glass has already been closed by ordinance previously filed by Brockway Glass. As you can see, there's also a business down by Betty Jane Lane. This did pass as far as Planning Commission went. Staff originally recommended approval. Since that time, we have received the complaints from Brockway Glass and from the neighbor to the south. I drove out and looked at the area, and there is a garage bay door on the area by Betty Jane Lane that does go out onto that road. Brockway Glass did show me how they bring their trucks in. Part of their concern is they have trucks loaded with oxygen that they bring in. They don't want to bring through the main street. They want to bring in through the back entrance. So this could cause some problems. The applicant is here tonight to answer questions. At this point, without any further knowledge as far as the applicant's purpose, we would recommend denial. One thing I would like to point out is if we do vacate this alley, then the applicant can proceed to district court to have it closed.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhammer. We have several residents signed to speak to us tonight on this item. Mr. Jason, if I mispronounce your name, please forgive me. Shoff?
Joe.
Thank you. If you come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, you'll have 15 minutes.
Five.
Five minutes. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. You'll have five minutes.
Got you. My name is Jason Chups. I'm the owner of Oakymark.
Yes.
So what I'm wanting to do here is, I wanted, I bought that piece of property about two years ago. I'm wanting to build some warehouses on it. So it's a new piece of property with its own legal description. So as we started the process with the planning committee, new rules apply to that where I can't put up a red iron building with the sheet metal walls and sheet metal roofs, open-faced lumber sheds, things of that sort, which is what I bought it for, which would just increase constructions cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to adhere to the new standards. So obviously, with it being on kind of a back alley street like that, I didn't quite comprehend it, but through, this started back even with Tish and then now with Scott. They tried to go to combine the legal descriptions, so that way it could be a secondary building to the existing building, which is sheet metal. And so we just went through this process to try to get the same legal description so we can build back there, the buildings which we would like, which would be, you know, extremely cheaper. With the street closure itself, that street's very, I mean, important to me and my business. I mean, I would have no intentions of shutting that street down to any through traffic. Basically, the way Scott proposed to me, I would just be in charge of that, maintaining that road. So as far as shutting any traffic down through to Rockaway, I mean, we would not do that. Like I told him from the beginning when we started that process, I said they use that road every day, so I know they will be against it. But basically, just through their recommendation, that is where we're at, so.
What I would recommend, and the city attorney, Ms. Bodenhammer, can chime in, Jason, is that, given the nature of where your new facilities would be, I would think it would be more appropriate to request a variance so that your facility can be constructed without having a road closure.
And I believe they went through that. I mean, I, I know the city attorney was contacted through Scott asking about joining the properties and, like I said, I'm just, I'm following the steps of what.
Yes, sir.
I don't know because I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
Did you have a hearing before the Board of Adjustment?
Um, I did not.
Okay, that would be the entity that would have granted a variance, so.
And I personally, I'm only one member of this council, I would think that would be a more acceptable option without having to close the street. And that way, because of where this facility would be located, it's not, in my mind, going to cause any problem for visual and all this kind of stuff. And it adds economic development to our community. So that would be my suggestion. If that's amenable for you to pursue that process, it may be appropriate to withdraw. I don't know, Mr. Tucker, I'm not you. And then see how we could proceed from there.
For sure. It doesn't matter for purposes of whether the council denies it or if he withdraws, if he's going to go to the Board of Adjustment. For purposes of a road closure, I believe there's a particular time before you can reapply, but that doesn't apply for a variance.
Right, so this, so this will take the road closure off the table.
Yes.
And that way you can apply for a variance.
You're, you're only interested in putting it all together and not interested in closing the road, but you think it might help you change your building construction opportunities?
Yes, exactly. I mean, that's 100% where we're at.
Jason, you're a building behind a building and we're going to figure out.
That's what I've said from day one.
We're going to figure out how to get you a variance in there. You're in a completely industrial area.
Exactly.
I don't know if you remember me or not.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm bless his buddy.
Oh, yeah.
Please contact me and I'll be glad to help walk this through for you. We don't want you to have to go in there and brick the sides and all that. That's not what we're looking for.
For sure.
We're looking to help you be successful in business and also keeping that road available for every, I go through there and load up a bunch of stuff and pull all the way around.
Oh, no, like I said, 100%. I.
Appreciate you guys too.
Oh, yeah.
Running a good business there, so we don't want to shut down your project by any means.
Okay.
We want to help you get it done right, and I'd be glad to help you with that.
Okay.
So we're going to help you figure out how to get your metal building back there and add on to what you got going on.
Perfect.
So, Mr. Tucker, what, how should we proceed?
It's up to the applicant whether he wants to withdraw his application. Otherwise, the council will need to move forward with some action.
Would you withdraw the street closure in exchange for applying for a variance?
Yes.
And as Councilor Reynolds has expressed most of our sentiment on tonight, we're extremely happy to try to help you go that route instead.
Before we move on, Mayor, I assume you would have paid a fee?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so there's a fee for a hearing before the Board of Adjustment. I don't know the difference in those fees.
Oh, yeah, well, a couple hundred bucks that I paid for this.
But my point is, if, as the mayor suggested, the point is to effectively exchange this request for Board of Adjustment, then we may need, we need to make sure and reapply the fee that was paid to the Board of Adjustment, and then you make up whatever differences because I don't know whether they're the same or not.
The fee the applicant paid was $118.
For this, for the road closure?
For this.
But do we know what the fee for Board of Adjustment is?
No, sir. I can find out.
All right. So as long as we understand, everybody understands that's what is going on, then we'll make that happen as part of staff's obligation.
Fine with that. So we'll consider the application withdrawn.
Okay.
Is the council clear?
Yes.
Do we need to hear from the other applicants? They've signed up. Mr. Matt Hallward, would you still like to speak?
No, sir, I believe I'm just.
Thank you. I don't know what this. Tom Montgomery.
No, Mayor, I'm fine.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. We need a motion or we're good?
We're good.
Next item.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of the preliminary and final plat for Letty Mae Edition, or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, sir. This is an application for Letty Mae Edition. This has a preliminary and final plat filed by the applicant. She is building a one house. You can see where the area is highlighted in green. This is located south of Smith Ferry at the end of Jonathan Place, south of Orchard Park Edition. She wants a single-family residence placed there. In order to do that, because it's 3.70 acres, she did have to do a subdivision plan. This property does have access to city water and sewer services. This is the final plat. Subdivision Review, Planning Commission, and Public Works have all approved this subdivision plan, and staff recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No one has signed to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 14.
Consider approval of amended ordinance number 3903A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 82, Utilities, Article 2, Charges and Procedures, Division 3, Water Service Charges, by amending Section 82-71, Rates Generally, Subsection A, by providing for repealer severability and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Tracy.
Mayor and council, the proposed amendment, I'm sorry, the proposed amended ordinance before you tonight relates to the city's reduced rates program for the elderly and fully disabled utility customers. This program offers reduced rates for citizens that are age 65 and older or fully disabled with an income level of no greater than $1,000 for a single individual and $1,200 for a couple. In 2012, city council reviewed the poverty level established by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. At that time, council approved an increase in the thresholds from 800 to 1,000 for a single and 1,000 to 1,200 for a couple. No adjustments have been made since that time. Staff is recommending city council once again review the current poverty level and approve the following increases, from 1,000 to 1,200 for a single individual and from 1,200 to 1,600 for a couple. Citizens can apply for the program by completing the application and providing required documentation and submitting it to the water department each year. Applications may be found on the city's website or in person. Staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy, for your research on this effort. Do we have any comments from the council? What is your pleasure?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number 14. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 15.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4169A, amending the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma Code of Ordinances, Section 2-136, Application of Uniform Method of Filling Vacancies on Board and Commissions, Public Trust or Other Entities Within Article 5, Boards and Commissions, Division 1, Generally Prohibiting Self-Appointment, Providing for Repeler Severability and Declaring an Emergency, or Take Other Necessary Action.
Members of the council, this was my agenda item, and specifically, what we're trying to accomplish is to make certain that we provide ways to include more members of the community to serve on public trusts or other entities, including boards and commissions, so that we can hear from them in an advisory capacity. Of course, we have the responsibility, as well as the authority as members of this body, to approve or deny any requests or recommendations made by said commissions. But allowing them to serve in our stead prevents us from being in a situation where we may be advising ourselves. And so what I have is basically to say that we will, I will recommend that unless a board, commission, or trust, or entity requires that its membership include a member of the city council, no member of the city council shall exercise his or her power of appointment to appoint him or herself to any board, commission, public trust, or entity. So in other words, we could recommend our peers to serve on a board, except for a case where the board requires a city council member to serve. If it's your turn to appoint, and it's a requirement that a city council member serve, then you may still have that pleasure to do that. But other boards, commissions, and other entities, we will refer one another to serve appropriately. And that would be my motion.
Second.
And just let me clarify that what the mayor has read into the record is actually a substitute from what has been included in your packet. E is the section that is going to be substituted. As it originally stated in the ordinance that was in the packet, members of the council could not self-appoint for any board, commission, or trust. And it did not take into account those boards where a council member may serve themselves. So the substitute that the mayor is offering expands that to allow a member to self-appoint for boards, commissions, and trusts, which require a member of the city council to serve. A good example is Mr. Reynolds' appointment coming up. He's appointing himself to the City of Muskogee Foundation Board of Directors. That position requires it to be a council member, and so in those instances, he can self-appoint. If, however, his appointment were going to be to something like the Facilities Board, where it doesn't require the person be a council member, then he would be prohibited under this new ordinance from appointing himself to that board. So just wanted to clarify the difference between the ordinance as was presented and the proposed substitution that is being offered by the mayor and that has been seconded by Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion?
I had a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
What becomes the new process?
The new process is there, if there is a vacancy for a board, commission, or entity that does not require a council member to be nominated or serve, then we would recommend one another, but not be able to recommend ourselves.
So we would go to, we would ask the council person to put you on that board? Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Second part, what was the emergency? Or had that been stricken?
We haven't had the emergency yet.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion on that motion and second? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, now we would consider declaring an emergency.
Move for approval. I'm taking it.
We have a motion and a second to declare the emergency, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, that'll be recognized.
Yes, Mr. Van.
We explain to the public what the emergency consists of, that way, a lot of people don't know when we say emergency, what that consists of. We're up here to represent our constituents, so let's let them know some things.
I will defer that to Mr. Tucker.
Um, so the council has the option to declare whether a, uh, ordinance is an emergency or not. Um, and an emergency is basically an item that is legislatively determined by the city council to be one that affects the safety, welfare, and morals of the community as a whole. So the difference is, if an ordinance is deemed to be an emergency ordinance, it requires a supermajority to pass the emergency clause, which has to be voted on separately. The effect is, the ordinance goes into, uh, effect immediately upon publication, which in this case will be Friday.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Um, if there is an emerg, if their emergency fails, or if you have an ordinance that does not have an emergency, then it is, then its effective date is automatically thirty days from publication. And so it is up to the council to determine whether an emergency exists, warranting the passage of this ordinance or any ordinance. Uh, and, uh, based on, uh, what I have said in the past, um, which has been a restatement of, uh, Supreme Court precedent, is whether or not an emergency exists for purposes of declaring an emergency in an ordinance is a legislative determination that the courts will defer to the city council on their determination. It will not be set aside, in fact, courts don't even look at it. So it is truly up to the council as to whether an emergency exists or not.
I'd just like to bring this up, these things up, because like I say, our constituents watch us up here, and we, we always saying these different things, and they don't understand, a lot of times I don't, you know, I didn't understand before I got up here, so they don't understand either at home, so I just thought I, that's, that's why, you know, I interrupted you to say that. But I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van, that was a good question. Further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number sixteen.
Discuss and take action to direct the Code Enforcement Division of the Planning Department to prioritize structures which have been significantly damaged by fire as part of the city's dilapidated building program.
First of all, let me say thank you to, uh, the Code Enforcement Division, because much of what is in this agenda item tonight is already taking place. They've made a, uh, stringent effort to be certain that they prioritize among themselves, looking at burned structures when it comes to the dilapidated building program. However, there was not an action taken by the council, uh, to ratify that action, to be certain that the priority is made clear to the public, that with as many burned structures as we have throughout the city right now, that our number one priority is tackling our burned structures, uh, using the city's dilapidated building program, uh, and to that effect, I will move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number seventeen.
Consider approval of the appointment of Tim Wheeler to the Muskogee Tourism Authority to serve a five-year term, filling the expired term of Jamie Stout, beginning August one, twenty-twenty-two, and expiring July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven, or take other necessary action.
Members of the council, this is my recommendation, I served on several boards with Mr. Wheeler already. Uh, he's very engaged in our community, eager to serve in different capacities, such as the Muskogee Tourism Authority, and I would recommend approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number seventeen, any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item seventeen passes, item number eighteen.
Consider approval of the appointment of Brittany Beasley to the City Facilities Board to serve a five-year term, beginning August one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven, or take other necessary action.
This is my appointment, I've known Brittany Beasley for some time, she's a very young, up-and-coming entrepreneur here in our city. She has engaged the city in many areas, in terms of facilitating her own business, uh, identity and processes, and I think she would make a wonderful addition to the City Facilities Board, and I recommend approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on number eighteen, any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number nineteen.
Consider approval of the appointment of Shanika Breedlove to the Parks and Recreation Board to serve a four-year term, filling the expired term of Stacy Alexander, beginning August one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six, or take other necessary action.
Shanika Breedlove has been an intricate part of our community, she's a former girls' basketball coach at the high school, she's very engaged in different areas, being certain that she lends herself to work with people and community. I think she would be an ideal fit for the Parks and Recreation Board, and I recommend approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, number nineteen, any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item nineteen passes, item number twenty.
Consider approval of the appointment of Julie McCombe to the Historic Preservation Commission to serve a three-year term, beginning August one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, this is my appointment, I would like to nominate Julie McCombe to the Historic Preservation Commission.
We'll take that in the form of a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on number twenty, any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number twenty passes, item number twenty-one.
Consider the appointment of Counselor Alex Reynolds to the City of Muskogee Foundation Board, serving a two-year term, filling the expired term of Counselor Ivory Van, beginning August one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, this is my item, I'm not exactly sure how you can follow, Mr. Van, but I'm gonna try to do my best. Uh, with that, I move to put myself on the Foundation Board.
I'm taking it.
We have a motion and a second on number twenty-one, any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number twenty-one passes, item number twenty-two.
Consider approval of the appointment of Judith Hoffman to the Planning and Zoning Commission, filling the expired term of Daryl Russell, beginning August one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reynolds. This is also my, uh, item, uh, Judith Hoffman is very involved, and I would like at this time to nominate her to the Board of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We'll take that in the form of a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on Judy Hoffman, do we have any discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, we have one citizen sign to speak to us tonight, Counselor Alex Reynolds, if you give us your name and your address, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, uh, Alex Reynolds, one twenty North Main Street, in Ward Three downtown. Um, I'd like to briefly discuss downtown with you guys. Um, a lot of you guys don't make it through downtown on a daily or weekly basis, and, uh, I'm here to discuss the graffiti that is popping up on a daily basis. Every morning when I come into downtown, there's someone new who has popped into town, or a group that is, uh, tagging everything. And, um, if you drive by the Muskogee Hotel, you can see it across the Broadway side, as well as the Main Street side. Um, as you drive around, you're going to see that everywhere. Um, the one twenty, or, uh, four twenty North Main, I believe, a dispensary or whatever that is down there, they've just spent about ten grand on an amazing, um, mural down there, which is, uh, a, a wonderful piece of work, I would ask everyone to drive by and look at it. But that is Merle Haggard, um, and Bob Marley. And, uh, once I saw the new tags this morning, I was terrified, and that's the next place I went, because I would be devastated to see something like that happen. As I said, I come into town every day, I see several different homeless people. About every other day, I see three or four different people, ask them where they're from, um, who they are, what's their name is and everything, and we seem to have a real influx of people coming right now. Um, it's creating a bit of a problem downtown, to where the patrons that are coming downtown, they're not exactly sure what's going on, why there are so many homeless people, why we're having a lot of tags right now. I'm really asking if we would reach out to law enforcement right now, we really need to be paying attention. If, we've got a lot of dilapidated buildings, we've got a lot of vacant properties, we've got a lot of weeds and all kinds of stuffs that are downtown, where we're not putting our best foot forward. Half of downtown looks a little shabby, and I'm terrified that this graffiti is going to bring about additional problems. They're hitting a lot of buildings where people aren't coming back over and painting over it. We really need to do something. If we add to the problems that we have already, I'm afraid that we're going to make it more difficult to keep the doors open from some of the businesses downtown. So, I would ask you, counselors, to please, uh, look, as you drive downtown, let's ask, um, our friends in law enforcement to be, um, a little bit more diligent and visual as they're coming and going. But these, these folks are getting right out on Main Street. Um, they went and tagged, uh, well, you can see, just drive, drive around, you'll see it, they're coming out every night and hitting more and more stuff. So, with that, um, I'd like to thank you all for this time, and please, let's, uh, work together to make Muskogee a better place, and the jewel is our downtown, if we can get it looking nice, it can overflow into the rest of the inner cities, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Mayor, for purposes of clarification, though, uh, Counselor Reynolds gave his address as Ward Three, that is his business address, not his residence.
Thirty-nine hundred Hancock.
I just wanted to clarify that for purposes, for purposes of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, number twenty-three.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section three oh-seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local number twenty-four sixty-five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in an open session. B, pursuant to Section three oh-seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local number fifty-seven, and if necessary, take appropriate action in an open session. C, pursuant to Section three oh-seven B four, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss potential litigation by Okmoggi Enterprises LLC related to denial of its application for a specific use permit, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
We will now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to convene into executive session, roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, we will now convene into executive session, all of those not party to the session, please excuse yourselves at this time. We will now reconvene from executive session, roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.